Everybody on Zoom, so please speak up A if you can't hear me and B if you have questions. First up is a review of the minutes. Were there any additions or amendments to the minutes? If not, I'd take a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, August 12th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of August 12th.
Okay, we have a motion, I believe, from Commissioner Swenson.
Yes.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
And a second from Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
I think that was Burrows.
Burrows, sorry. If you could say your name, that would be helpful. Okay, so we are going to do roll call votes for absolutely everything, including the approval of the minutes. Commissioner Swenson?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Aye, myself vote aye. The motion passes. Okay, first up on the agenda, petition from Diane Hansen. Is that what you have first, Holly?
Yes.
Okay, petitioner appeals from the City Code section which limits fence construction adjacent to corner lots. They are proposing a six-foot-tall privacy fence located in the corner lot. The existing lot is over the minimum 6,000-square-foot requirement. About 75 feet of six-foot privacy fence will be within the two-and-a-half-foot setback area. There is an existing fence that is four-and-a-half feet from the property line where the new fence is proposed. The closest driveway is 12 feet back from the fence. And I see staff notes that the fence is restricted to the backside yard. There is sidewalk on two sides of the property, and the fence ends about 12 feet from the south property line. This would be a recommendation to council. Go ahead, Holly, take us through this.
Yeah, actually, that pretty much covers it. Those are all the details. So the, so those of you on Zoom, and I think here in the
Yeah.
in the meeting room can see the Google Map or Google Earth. So the, I've got the little hand here kind of showing where the fence would be located. So it just juts out here and goes along the east side of some shrubbery, which is probably pretty, pretty low. I don't think it's taller than three feet. And then would connect in here about, just gonna look at my drawing here. I think it was It's about 12 feet from this property line. So this driveway here shouldn't be an issue. So the fence would be here to here, just replacing what's existing. So just some notes, again, the fence is restricted to the backside yard. And the fence ends about 12 feet from the south property line. Do you have any, any questions about what she's asking for? Or any questions about, any concerns about safety or any other issues that would be relevant?
That driveway you showed, is that her driveway?
No, it's the neighbor's driveway. That is, what business is that? That's the heating, the heating
Is it Greenman?
Yeah, Greenman. Yeah, that's
Oh, okay.
Holly, do we know, it looks like they're looking to go a foot higher than the current fence from five to six feet. Is that correct? And do we have any concerns about sight and vision with that?
I've been to the location several times. She's been contemplating replacing that fence for years. And I just suggested that she try a fence appeal. So one of the, yeah, she, so she did just, she did want to have a privacy fence. I understand she does have some children that play in the back area at times. And she is located on kind of a busy road. But I, I didn't see anything that I thought would be a sight obstruction from a traffic perspective. And even backing out of that driveway, I mean, I guess I didn't, you know, look into how often Greenman uses that storage area. But there have never been any vehicles parked there that I've noticed. And then backing out, there's still 12 feet between the fence and the driveway, which is more than we generally have, even if we had it angled for sight purposes. And again, I mean, it's been like that for, trying to think, we had a permit for it. It was in the 80s or 90s, so many years in that same location without any issues.
This is a public hearing. Are there any citizens either in person or on Zoom who are interested in speaking or asking questions on this topic?
I'm just gonna double-check her.
Holly, it doesn't, it's just her backyard, correct? This is Melissa. It doesn't go out to the corner, does it?
No, it doesn't go all the way to the corner of her property. It, it's like 12 feet setback from the corner.
Okay.
It's just not, and then it's four-and-a-half feet to the, to where the existing fence is, which is where she wants to place it. I think it's just, there's existing landscaping.
Any other questions from any of the commissioners on this? If not, I would entertain a motion on this proposal.
This is Commissioner Stewart. Just wanted to confirm that there are no safety issues or concerns regarding the sight line with the fence?
No, no, I'm not. I didn't find anything that would, that I thought was a concern.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the fence as presented in the application.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as presented. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. Any other, go ahead.
To clarify, this is Commissioner Stewart again. This is the recommendation to the council.
Yes. I believe that is correct.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions or discussion before we take a roll call vote on this? Okay, Commissioner Swenson?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Postma votes aye. Motion passes. Onto City Council. All right, next up, we have a petition from Joy Mariana. I'm sorry if I pronounced it incorrectly. Holly, why don't you, oh, for a cup, for CUP, will you take us through this one a little bit?
Yeah, Ms. Mariana is asking for a conditional use permit to approve a home occupation. She is proposing to have a massage business located at her home at 1407 Seventh Street Southeast. It's in a R1 single-family residential district. The, she has had a, she has had a massage business here in Austin previously, moved away for a while and now has come back. So she, in order to get her license approved, she needed to have a, you know, inspection by our building department. She has to go through background check with the police department. And also has to have an inspection by our zoning department. And just speaking to her realized that she didn't have the home occupation approval. So she made the application and brought, brought this here tonight. She is asking for a conditional use permit, which Planning Commission will make a final decision if it is not appealed to council within 15 days. I have not gotten any comments from any of the neighbors about this petition or application. And notifications that go out, there's a list in the packet. The petitioner applicant is here on the Zoom call if we have any questions for her. Home occupation is defined in our ordinance. I'll just quick summarize. The occupation should occur only on the principal residential structure on the site. Should be located on one floor only, not occupy more than a third of that floor area. Some of this isn't entirely relevant to what she's doing. No mechanical or electrical equipment used that would create nuisance. Parking should be limited to two or less off-street customer parking spaces at any given time. And any signs should be in compliance with our sign code. I did, like I said, we did go and inspect the area that she's proposing to do the business in. And it is just one room in her house. And it's my understanding that she can, it looks like she can accommodate off-street parking. She has a garage with a big driveway. The appointments will be scheduled so that clients aren't waiting on the premises while she finishes with another client. Some of the things that you should take into consideration, and let me, I'll just set my mic down for a second while I pull this up on Google Maps. Now I've dealt these labels, I'm trying to figure out which one is yours, Joy. All right, it's gonna take me too long to find this. Do any of you, do any of you have any questions about?
Holly, you should pick the mic back up.
Oh, yeah. So there is an aerial in your packet that shows the parking area in front of the house, in front of the garage. And the location of the neighboring properties and the, you know, the width of the street. So there is on-street parking. There's some cars in the aerial that are on the street parked. So again, it looks like any off-street parking or, you know, any parking that would be necessary is available. At least as proposed, as the business is proposed. And with the CUP, you can add conditions. So the number of clients at one time could be added as a requirement to the CUP. And if that becomes a nuisance issue and their, the CUP is violated, there'd be another public hearing to revoke the CUP. Some of the things that you should consider is whether the use will create an excessive burden on existing infrastructure. I think public facilities and utilities that serve the area. Whether the use will sufficiently be compatible with residentially zoned or that homes will not be depreciated in value. And that there would not be a deterrent to development of any vacant land. That the structure on the site should have an appearance that will not have an adverse effect upon adjacent residential properties. In this instance, I did visit, I don't know if any of you have gone by, but it's just a really, it's just a nice house in a pretty nice neighborhood. The use, in the opinion of Planning Commission, is reasonably, reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and to the existing land use. The use is consistent with the purpose of our zoning chapter, which does allow home occupations as a conditional use. That the use will not cause traffic hazard or congestion. Existing businesses will not be adversely affected. That the use will not result in unnecessary destruction of natural features. Nothing would change on that site at this point. And then also consider the geographical area involved, character of surrounding area, whether there will be any nuisance associated with the use. We recommend that there's some accommodation of off-street parking as needed. And again, that appointments be scheduled so that clients are not waiting behind other clients.
Holly, I know you mentioned that this is a final unless appealed. Remind me, I believe a CUP is good for five years and then has to be renewed, or is that incorrect?
No, at this time, we have an interim use permit, which is temporary. The conditional use permit actually stays with the property. Although we are changing some language to, you know, make that, it's not in effect now. But typically, there's language that would allow the CUP or the use to expire after a certain period of time of not using it. But in this instance, it will stay perpetually with the property. So if someone else wanted to come in, they would be coming into that property with the ability to have a massage establishment. But they'd still, in this instance, have to go through all the licensing, the background checks, the inspections. If they wanted to do anything different than what Ms. Mariana's doing or have any, you know, like certain business hours or more people, they'd have to amend the conditional use permit, so it would come back to us. If they strictly followed the existing conditional use permit, there wouldn't be an issue.
Thank you.
And this is recorded at the recorder's office. So it says a record on the property.
Any questions for Holly or the petitioner right now from the commissioners?
Holly, as long as it's in the residential area, is there a limit to the, how early in the morning or how late at night the business can operate?
You can, you can create conditions if you want. I haven't made any recommendations. It sounded like when I spoke to Ms. Mariana that, that she was, I guess, not doing anything unusual as far as, I guess Austin's an early-morning town, all right? But, yeah, that's certainly something she can speak to. Ms. Mariana, are you still, are you still on the call?
Yeah, you're on mute.
There, better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I don't have any plans to do too early in the morning or too late at night. And all my clients would be by referral, word of mouth only. And at this point, with COVID precautions and everything else, I'm allowing at least an hour, 45 minutes to an hour between clients. So the parking wouldn't be an issue either. There's one point I do want to clarify. I did move back to Austin in 2010. I was living in the house right next door at 1501 Seventh Street. My parents owned it. And I did apply for a massage business license out of that property. But as I grew more taking care of them full-time, I dropped that part of my license. But I've maintained my City of Austin license since I've been here.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Mariana from the commissioners? This is an open public hearing. Is there anybody else in person or on Zoom interested in speaking on this? If not, I would entertain a motion from one of the commissioners.
This would just be a motion to approve with the recommendations or a motion to deny or a motion to approve with the recommendations made, plus any additional recommendations?
This is Melissa Swenson. I'll make a motion to approve the continuous use permit for the massage business at 1407 Seventh Street Southeast.
Thank you, Commissioner Swenson. We have a motion to approve with the staff recommendations in place. Any second to that?
This is Karim Salas. I'll make a motion, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions, or amendments to the motion from the commissioners? Okay, if not, we will do a roll call vote on the motion to approve the CUP. Commissioner Schrock?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Swenson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Postma votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, on to our next one. Scrolling, scrolling. Okay, we have a petition from JS2 Properties to take two lots and convert them into one existing lot. Oh, I'm sorry, that is incorrect, to take one lot and make it into two lots. Holly, will you take us through this one?
Yeah, so our ordinance does not allow us to have two primary structures on one lot. In this instance, this is presumably existed prior to our adoption of the zoning code. There's one parcel with two homes on it. The petitioners are proposing that this parcel be split, and they've included a survey showing the proposed split to allow there to be two properties that could be individually owned versus the situation they have now. Right now, they just have two, I mean, they could still both be rentals. Right now, they're, they're both rental properties. But, you know, if there was an owner, I mean, at this point, there could be two owners, but they'd own the whole thing 50/50. There's no way to split the property. If they, they could have an owner with a rental property, I guess, but I think they feel like it would be more marketable. And Jacob from JS2 is here, and he can speak to that if you have any questions. But, so, yeah, so they propose to split it into two properties, which will make it another non-conforming use because the two parcels will not meet the minimum lot size that we require in the city. The existing lot is a little bit shy of the 6,000 square feet. It's 5,670 square feet. So that's not precisely conforming either. The new lots would be, I think the one to the north would be 1,980 square feet. So quite a bit smaller than what our, our minimum requirement is. And then the one to the south would be 3,690 square feet. The properties would have access, each property would have access from, I think that's Seventh Street, yep, Seventh Street Northwest. Then there is also the alley to the north of the smaller parcel. Each property has its own utilities, is my understanding. And the use will not change. It'll remain residential. So I don't think you've ever had, at least the commissioners I have right now, have had the, a change of non-conforming use. So in our ordinance, we do allow a change. Under the ordinance, any non-conforming use of a structure or structure and premises may be changed to another non-conforming use provided that Planning Commission and council shall find that the proposed use is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the existing non-conforming use. In permitting the change, you may require appropriate conditions and safeguards in accord with the provisions in the zoning chapter. There's really not, I mean, in splitting the property, there, there really aren't a lot of options. This is a neighborhood that's been built for many years. So there's not really a lot of room to expand based on neighboring properties. You know, there are some other options potentially, if, you know, if the property to the north were demoed, you know, and maybe adding a garage. But at this point, that doesn't seem to be financially most feasible option for the property owners. So thus, they are petitioning us for the non-conforming use change. And I do have it pulled up on here on Google Maps. It's the one with the red vehicle here. So this is the parcel. Does anybody have any questions? Again, Jacob is here. He can ask, answer anything that maybe I don't have in the materials that you might have questions about.
Holly, I know you sent out a lot of mailings. Any feedback from any neighbors?
Oh, yeah, thanks for reminding me. No, nothing. I have not had any, oh, wait, actually, Laura Helly, our council member, lives in that neighborhood and got one of the notices. And she said, she called me and said the neighbors had talked to her about it, some neighbors. some neighbors, and were curious. So then I just sent her the information about what they were trying to do and just to create two parcels out of one, and then it would still be residential. And I didn't get any follow-up from that.
Okay.
So they, they each have their own driveway currently, and it'll stay that way? Did I miss that part, or?
Jacob, can you maybe explain how the driveway works? I mean, I think they share driveway. I think there'd be an easement, maybe?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so where you see the two vehicles right now, I'm assuming at one point there was a garage because there's some, there was only about fifteen, sixteen years ago, there was a footing that was there that we ended up taking, had taken out. But if you go to the east of those two cars, that's actually a parking lot, there's a driveway right there. So what we did with the survey is we actually separated the property line basically right between those two vehicles. So each person, each house will have their own individual driveway, although it's, it's gonna look like it's one because that's gonna all be gravel or cement or asphalt or whatever, but they will individually each have their own parking spot and their own driveway, but it will appear as it's, as if it's shared.
And Jacob, could you do me a favor just for public record? Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Jacob Smith with JS Two Properties. I just moved, so I currently reside in Blooming Prairie at 206 Second Street Northeast in Blooming Prairie.
Thank you so much. Any other questions for the petitioner from the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Burrows. I just want to clarify that there's currently no garages on either of these properties. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions?
Holly, are you aware of any other property in the city of Austin that would have a area of less than 2,000 square feet?
You know, I haven't looked for a parcel similar, but we do have some pretty small parcels. It's harder to see on this Google Earth because there are no property lines on here. Yeah, that's, that's pretty small. Yeah, it wouldn't be typical. But I don't, I can't say that there are or aren't. It wouldn't surprise me if there are smaller parcels, but maybe not that small. At least nothing that I've worked on in the six years that I've been here. As far as, you know, any permitting or anything like that. It could always be combined later. You know, if one of those properties was demoed at some point, I mean, they could be combined again. It's just, there'd be two owners to deal with potentially.
Do you happen to know the history of why the 6,000 square feet was picked as our zoning minimum, or business to Byram?
You know, well, and you can talk about this too, but you know, typically with the zoning standards, you know, part of it's aesthetic, you know, so the way that the city looks, there's some uniformity. And then the idea of, you know, you know, providing, I guess, some breathing room, you know, if, if structures are, you know, too close together, you know, there are potentially safety hazards. You know, if any additions or any kind of work were done on any of these properties, they'd still have to meet, you know, like fire code, building code, all those kinds of things. So I guess I don't foresee there being like any kind of safety concerns or hazards related to that size parcel. You know, I think we have the infrastructure, so a little bit higher density isn't necessarily a bad thing. I just don't know that that would be super marketable to the average person, not having, you know, much of a yard or, you know, and then not having the ability to have a garage potentially. So I'm thinking most people probably wouldn't go this route unless it was a necessity. You need, you want to add anything, Craig, or, okay? He shook his head no.
Holly, so these are both residential properties occupied right now. We're not really changing any use of the structures.
I don't remember, Jacob, can you, are they vacant or are they occupied right now? I know you own them as rental properties in your.
Yeah, they're rental properties. They're currently a single man and, well, they're single men in both, I guess.
I'm sorry, I couldn't catch that. Did you catch that?
Yeah, they're both rented.
They're both rented, okay. And were you hoping to sell at some point, or was that one of the possibilities or an option?
Uh, yeah, it's always an option. It's, it doesn't fit the FHA guidelines, so if at some point, if we sold them whether as a combined or a separate, as a combined parcel, you, you can't get anybody to go and get thirty-year financing on them. So if we wanted to sell, say, one of the, or sell both of them, it would only be an investor. We could never, you know, sell, sell them to somebody who wanted to live in one and then rent down there unless they were able to pay cash for them. So it, it changes the marketability, but, I don't know, it just, it just seems to be a better use of the property to have individual ones versus combined. I, I don't, I know there's one other in Austin. I don't know if there are other ones, but there is one in the southeast that has two houses on one lot. It's just a, it, I'm a real estate agent, so from a real estate agent's standpoint, it's, it's an anomaly, and it's hard even to figure out what you do with them.
Thanks.
I'll say for me, I kinda, I, I always struggle with non-conforming uses. So I'm sort of like, which one is quote-unquote better? And while I definitely don't love necessarily the idea of a 2,000 square foot lot, I, I don't see any way around it. And I definitely do understand the perspective that it's more marketable and probably easier for folks to each have their own lot versus be on a combined lot. So at least from that aspect, having one less double lot in Austin, I, I would be okay with. I don't know if any other commissioners have any thoughts on this.
I, just for me, I, I just have a hard time going, we have a minimum 6,000 square foot, and we want some sort of compliance with that throughout the city, even aesthetically, to then approve something that's, what, two-thirds less than that? I just have a hard time with that, especially if there's a shared driveway that's gonna require a shared driveway agreement between the two parcels. I just have a hard time with this one, given the substantial decrease in what our minimum is.
I definitely understand that, that line of thought, and I, and I don't disagree. I'm struggling with that as well. Anyone else kind of want to weigh in with their thoughts on this one?
I would just say from a zoning standpoint and from a regulatory standpoint, it is hard to deal with two primary residences on one parcel. But again, you know, I guess, you know, I would agree that, you know, that is a small lot that's proposed. I mean, you can't get around that, but. Yeah, it's just, uh, it's just pretty unusual.
I should also throw out there that this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in person or on Zoom who wants to speak to this, now would be a great time to do so. So far, we've gotten kind of a mixed reaction from the couple commissioners who weighed in, so I'd love it if a few others kind of gave us their thoughts so we could see where this might be headed.
So how, I mean, I see it both ways, but like if you break it into two and it's not going to approve for an FHA loan, what's the difference if you leave it in one parcel and someone else chooses to buy it? Make one of the properties a garage or tear one of them down and make a garage, then it is closer to the conforming size, right? I mean, if, if they're not gonna be able to get an FHA loan on the smaller properties anyway.
I think he said the opposite. I think he said with two primary residences, there were. Can you explain again, Jacob?
Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna make the FHA, or FHA, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac guidelines for having two principal residences on a single lot. That just, it's, you're not gonna get a loan, not a secondary market loan, maybe something with a local lender, but having two separate. I don't know if there's minimum lot sizes. I, I'm not familiar with that being an issue, but as far as, at some point, if you wanted to sell these, if we wanted to sell these as individual units, and there's no plan to tear one of them down. They're both very nice houses, so just, I just don't see that happening. And, and to reiterate, the city actually came to me, asking me to do this.
Can you explain, Jacob?
I believe it was you who had come, I don't, we were talking about this, this street's getting tore up right now, and I think you had actually asked me, said, are you, are you opposed to maybe splitting this? And I said, we talked to Craig William about it fifteen, sixteen years ago, and it just never went anywhere. So it was the city who had suggested, the, both of them were non-conforming, they don't fit the guidelines, but the lesser of two evils is to have two, two individual parcels versus having one parcel with two homes. It's just, it's just an anomaly.
Yeah, I mean, this is really the only option if you wanted to have two separate properties. Again, there's not any space to expand in that area. Again, it's just a built-up area. Unless the property is in poor condition, I mean, there's nothing that would allow us to remove it.
Well, and there's a rental ordinance that this obviously has passed to be a rental property on both buildings.
Yeah, we've done the northwest. Those properties were inspected, is that correct, Jacob?
Yeah, Dwayne came in probably whenever, was that a year ago?
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we started in the northwest, so we're down in the southwest now.
Okay, yeah, and for me personally, as much as I don't love non-conforming, I'm not necessarily interested in removing what I'm assuming is fairly low-income housing that's passing steady standards right now, so.
This is Commissioner Stewart.
Yep.
Just wanted to know if Mr. Byram had any perspective or context that you'd like to add to this discussion?
This is Craig Byram, and, no, not really. I think everything that's been said is about as clear as you can, you can make it. There's a non-conforming use, a non-conforming situation there. And we have a process for changing non-conforming situations, and the whole idea is to try to make them better, not worse. And so the judgment is up to you folks on whether this makes it better or worse. It's a policy decision, not necessarily a legal one at this point.
Thank you.
I think the language is actually as good as, or, as bad as, or, or better.
Okay. I'll be, I don't really have a sense, to be honest, where the commissioners are looking right now. Is there any other, does anybody want to make a motion? Does anyone have a little bit of discussion here? You guys tell me how you want to go forward with this one.
I'll just read the non-conforming use change portion again, just for a reminder. So any non-conforming use of a structure or structure and premises may be changed to another non-conforming use provided that the board shall find that the proposed use is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the existing non-conforming use. In permitting the change, you may require appropriate conditions and safeguards in accord with the provisions in the zoning chapter. So if there were conditions that would make you feel more comfortable with the change of non-conforming use, those can certainly be suggested.
Just a thought, right now you have a non-conforming use because there are two structures on a single parcel, and that use is not allowed. When you split this into two, you don't really have a non-conforming use anymore because each lot will be a single-family residence, so the use will be compliant. Think of it in terms of a variance on minimum lot size. Is there something unique about this property that would justify us not applying the normal rules? One might argue that the unique thing is that there are two apparently good-condition, well-kept-up homes already constructed, making it impossible to create two lots of our normal size. So in that sense, in my mind, logically, I'm thinking you're eliminating a non-conforming use in favor of sort of a development standard being waived. I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Thank you. I will say for me, one of the things that has me leaning towards approving this is the fact that even if we could magically say we want, you know, that second smaller home to be turned into a garage and this be one lot, that is still not a conforming lot because it is still under 6,000 square feet. So while I don't really love either option, I do personally think that having two separate lots with, you know, rental, rental houses on each one is probably the best way forward that I can see on this.
I agree with you, Commissioner. I think that with the lot sizes, if one, a garage or, or a secondary structure wouldn't, wouldn't work, there is, is one total lot with two single-family residences on it. So I tend to agree that I think they should be split up into two parcels.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this one? Okay, well, I guess I will go ahead and make the motion to approve this. Remind me, Holly, are we looking at a variance here?
We're just calling a change in non-conforming use, which is allowed in the ordinance.
Okay, I, I would make a motion to approve this change in non-conforming use. That's Commissioner Postma. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Swenson, and I will second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion on this one?
Can you add that it's the same or that is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the existing non-conforming use?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Got that? So we've got this open for last chance at discussion before we'll do a roll call vote. Okay, Commissioner Shrock?
I think you're on mute. Oh, there you go.
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Swenson? Commissioner Swenson.
Aye.
Commissioner Postma votes aye. Motion passes on to City Council, five to one. Okay. Scrolling, scrolling. Erica does a lot of mailing. Okay, do we have petitioner Andres up next? Is that what you have, Holly?
Yes. Is it Endress?
Endress, thank you. Okay. Requesting a rezone of property from I-1 Light Industrial to B-2 Community Business District. Holly, I think this was going to be a good use of Google Maps. Take us through this one.
Oh, yeah, hang on, let me get to that spot.
Present land use is office space and some equipment and supply storage for window cleaning business in the same building is a residential apartment.
The building we're talking about, or the parcel we're talking about, is where the hand is right now. So I'm just going to zoom in. So this is actually a down zone, so this would be a less intensive use that's proposed from the use that is currently allowed. The petitioner currently uses the property for office space and some equipment and supply storage for his window cleaning business in the same building as a residential apartment. The petitioner has tried to rent some of that space for office, but has not been able to, and wishes to convert a portion of the building into additional rental space for tenant, for living space. In order to do that, so right now, currently in our zoning, we do not allow any residential uses in I-1 district. Probably in a year, that might change, but in the, in the current, with the current rules that we have, the next, the only zone that would come, I guess would accommodate both uses would be the B-2 Community Business District. Surrounding the property to the north and to the west, or east, are industrial and open space. To the west is, I got those mixed up on my handout here, but to the west is some commercial and single-family residential. The... There's a list of what all is allowed in a community business district. Again, this is more restrictive than what's allowed in the I-zoning district. Some of the considerations for rezoning, and this would be a rezone of the parcel, and then also a change to the future land use map from industrial to commercial retail. Some considerations, the consistency of the proposed zoning with our future land use map and comprehensive plan, the compatibility of the site with the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district, the compatibility of all potential uses allowed in the zoning district with the surrounding uses, any possible impact on the surrounding area, the capacity of the existing infrastructure and services to accommodate the uses permitted in the district without compromising the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. Whether the uses permitted in a zoning district will cause detrimental impacts, primarily environmental. The boundaries of the requested zoning district are sufficient to meet dimensional regulations for the proposed zoning district. We don't have a minimum for the B-2. The applicability of the applicant, the ability of the applicant to satisfy any requirement, he's not adding anything to the exterior of the property. He's just going to do some renovation to the interior of the building. I'll just quick go through the, the B-2 allowed uses. Principal purpose is to permit establishment of commercial shopping centers, which offer a variety of consumer goods and services. Generally located along major highways and thoroughfares, accommodate automotive-oriented establishments. Generally, all principal or conditional uses as regulated in B-1 are allowed, and then if you go through every single chapter, B-1 allows R-0, R-0 allows R-2, R-2 allows R-1. So other residential options are available. So this would be like an apartment, so this would be like an art, well, like a multifamily in a commercial area. Again, we do allow a single family actually right now in our commercial. Small retail store establishments, up to 70,000 square feet. Personal services and business services. Restaurants, processing, bakery catering, cleaning, ice storage, this is older, and distribution, yeah. We are updating this, but yeah, we have ice storage. Minor fabrication and repair, like television repair shops, plumbing shops. Drive-in uses like banks and financial institutions, eating places, home businesses, hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, generally, and then there are conditional uses. Commercial recreation like theaters, swimming pools, skating rinks, which don't exist anymore either, right? Driving ranges, similar open-air facilities, animal hospitals, veterinary clinics. Generally, we, our public utilities. Radio stations, warehousing, oh, no, not warehousing. Yeah, and residential. Bottling works. So this is where it gets... I think I said that wrong, hang on. So those are all permitted, those are all permitted uses. Conditional uses are bottling works, mining, limited manufacturing, automotive service and farm implements, warehousing, storage, and wholesaling, and large retail store establishments over 70,000 square feet. And then any accessory uses, as would be typical of the use allowed.
Holly, I don't know if you're able to do this, but can you throw up the current future land use map, you know, the one with the colors up on the screen?
You know, unfortunately, I didn't pull up, this isn't my computer, so I don't, I didn't pull up the, I think last time I saved it on a drive and plugged it in so I could have it available, and I didn't do that this time. The, but I can tell you if I grab that. And again, so this one also did, notices also did go out. We got, I got one call from a neighbor who was just curious. I didn't get any negative comments. I think Erica also talked to this individual. Yeah, so the future land use map, so there's a little spot where it says subject area, and that's kind of where I.J. Holton is. And then there's a little red circle around a parcel that's light purple, and that's office, light industrial. And then to the south of that, there's a dashed line, and that's where the county starts and the city ends. And then to the west is some commercial retail, so our future land use map shows only that, kind of that little chunk of light industrial where this property is located, and then a little bit to the north of that, but primarily it's allocated for commercial retail. So this wouldn't be terribly big change for that area. There are, there is still some open space and some area outside the city limits that has been designated for mixed use.
And if I'm reading this application correctly, there already is at least one person residing in this structure?
Yeah, that's a good point, so it would go from essentially a nonconforming use to conforming. So it's nice that we just got a that little bit of background in nonconforming uses.
So that's something that obviously the commission approved sometime in the past?
No, I'm guessing, well, I don't know, I mean, I'm guessing it probably came in, was probably annexed in with the living space. Do you know, can you speak to that? So this is the applicant? Can you state your name and, and address?
Nick Endress. I live at 4040 Berkshire Road, Rochester, Minnesota, and I own that building. We bought it from Doug Gerhart sixteen years ago, and there was an apartment then.
Okay.
So, and it's been rented every since.
And can you talk a little bit about, because it's hard to tell looking at a commercial building, so amount of apartments, what size of them, what this will sort of look like, hopefully, when you're done with it?
Yeah, it's an 800-square-foot, one-bedroom apartment, is what I want to put where the office used to be. And upstairs is a 900-square-foot two-bedroom. And that's what was there in the past.
So there'll only be two apartments?
Right.
Okay.
And then the other side of the building is where our employees start their day. We have two employees that start their day. We have a couple trucks there, and they get their water and go off. So it's just that for five years, we've tried to rent that office space, and with COVID and everything going on, we just figured it's even less of a chance of renting office space now. And we just figured we wanted to turn it into something useful.
Any questions from the commissioners for either Holly or the petitioner? This is also an open public hearing. If there's anybody in person or on Zoom who would like to speak to this, now is a good time for that.
This is also a recommendation to council.
So if we go forward with this, it would be a rezone, it would be, take something from a nonconforming to a conforming use, and it would actually be slightly more restrictive in what its use will be, what the parcel could be used for. And there was no concerns from any of the neighbors, is that correct, Holly?
Yes, that's correct.
Any thoughts from anyone on this one?
I will make a motion to rezon the parcel at 1101 8th Avenue, Southeast Austin, from an I-1 light industrial to a B-2 commercial.
Excellent, so we have a motion to approve the rezone. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, then I'll do the roll call vote. Commissioner Postma votes aye. Commissioner Swenson.
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrock.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously on the City Council. Thanks for joining us. You don't have to stick around if you don't want to. Okay. Continuing on. Okay, we have a petition from SNS Towing to amend a conditional use permit. Holly, talk to us about this one.
SNS Towing, the owner, Ron Schroeder is here. Is it Schroeder? Schroeder? Ron Schroeder is here. He, the location of the business is at 401 First Avenue Southwest, right across from Papa Murphy's, right? Papa Murphy's is across the street. The, this is an amended conditional use permit, so the, the existing conditional use permit that was granted was for a car sales business, and the petitioner, when he purchased the property, added towing to the business. It's in a B-2 Community Business District. The, to the north is a commercial property. To the south is a single multifamily residential, R-2. And east and west of the property is actually B-2. So the, the zoning along First Avenue Southwest is B-2, so there's an error in the materials there. So I have listed again for conditional uses in this particular area, automotive sales, farm implements, automobiles, trucks, trailers, farm implements for sale, display, trailer lots, pair garages, body and fender shops, paint shops, provided they're at least 50 feet from any residential district. And the premises shall be screened by a side obscuring solid wall, fence, or vegetative screen at least six feet high, where to joins in the rear or on the sides of any residential district, public park, school, or church. This is kind of difficult to fit in, I mean, doesn't say exactly towing, but automotive service, trucks, trailers, things for display, things that are being stored. It's all motor vehicles. So this seems like something that would fall under these requirements for our B-2 district. Again, things to consider that we went over for the previous conditional use permit is that the use will not create excessive burden on public facilities and utilities that is sufficiently compatible or separated by distances or screening from adjacent ag or residentially zoned use land, so that the existing homes will not be depreciated in value, and that there will be no deterrents to development of vacant land, that the use, in the opinion of the planning commission, is reasonably related to the overall needs of the city and existing land use. The structure and site shall have an appearance that will not have an adverse effect upon adjacent properties. The use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning chapter and zoning district which the applicant intends to locate. The use will not cause traffic hazard or congestion. Talks about existing businesses nearby will not be adversely affected by intrusion of noise, glare, general unsightliness. The use will not result in unnecessary destruction of natural features. I don't, I don't believe, we haven't talked about any changes to the property, right? You're not changing the, the building or anything like that? Yeah, so it's, I don't know what, I should pull it up.
Holly, can you repeat that for the folks on Zoom?
Yeah, the petitioner, I just kind of threw a question at him whether he intended to do any improvements on the building, and he said they had pre- Whether he intended to, um, do any improvements on the building and he said they had previously. Um, updated some areas of the building, but, and then added a six foot chain link fence. Um. I did combine the, some of the requirements. I left in the, the existing requirements and added some. Uh, uh, recommendations, uh, for the amended CUP. Um, so the petitioner again, you know, pur- purchased a former car lot, uh, for towing business. Um. And he can talk about this, but I understand he's got a license, license to do, to sell cars. Um, from that location and, uh. But because the existing CUP is for car sales only. Um, with the petitioner adding the towing business later, um. It seemed necessary to do some amendment. Um. The towing does have some similarities to the car lot, but there's also one storage of damage and inoperable, inoperable vehicles. Um, if the planning commission should choose to approve this requested conditional use permit. Um, I would ask you to consider, um. And I'll have to verify with the petitioner some of these things. Um, so hard surface material asphalt or concrete shall be provided for off-street parking and sales area. Um, the original CUP required a six foot high wooden fence or vegetative screen placed adjacent to the south property line. Of the development, um, to provide adequate screening to the adjacent multifamily property. Um, so I noted that a chain link was installed, but should probably have some screening, uh, as required by the ordinance. Um, or should have some screening as required by ordinance. That the landscaping, uh, there was a requirement let landscaping be provided and meet with overall approval of the planning and zoning office. Um, I added that unintentional and volunteer vegetation along the fence line should be cleared. And maintained, of course, um, you know, on their property as they're able to get to it. The mechanical repairs, uh, should not be made on site. That's from the original. Um, hours of business shall be clarified. That's from the original, although I assume in this instance. That would be twenty-four seven, but again, I can, what, I'll give you a minute. Uh, so can you just state your name and address and then I can just kind of ask you a couple of questions?
Ron, Ron Schroder, twenty-one eleven Third Avenue Southeast.
So, Mr. Schroder, thanks for joining us. Can you tell us a little bit, uh, Holly touched on it. This is one of the questions I was gonna have is hours of operation. Um, I'm guessing are gonna be a little different for you than what a normal car lot would have.
Well, our regular, we have regular business hours, nine to five, although our towing business operates twenty-four hours, but we're on call. So each of us take a truck home and, you know, when we get a call, we go out.
So could, could possibly, say you get called at two AM to grab a car? And would it then get brought back to this lot at that time of night?
It, it does happen, yeah. We tow for the Austin Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. So most of the cars we have there are all police tows.
Okay.
So, yeah, they, we, you know, I, I believe just the other night we had one that was dropped off probably one in the morning. But we try to be courteous of the neighbors and everything and, you know, we don't make a lot of noise or anything like that.
Do your tow vehicles have, um, required like backup noise sounds that I know some vehicles that are oversized are required to have?
We have one truck that has a backup alarm, but that truck's, we don't even use it anymore. That's, we're trying to sell that one.
Holly, you said you had a couple of questions?
Yeah, um. The, yeah, the vegetation along the property lines, is that on your property? Do you know?
Which ve- which vegetation?
There's a lot of trees and shrubs and.
On the south side?
On the west side?
On the, that, that fence over there is ours. We own the property to the south as well.
Would there be any issue with clearing out that?
We've actually been clearing that out, yeah, especially along the south, all the dead trees and the brush that's been back there. We've slowly been cleaning it all out, uh, along with the whole property.
So would the intention then to make your current business onto that property once you've got things cleared up? Or is that gonna be something separate?
I don't understand that.
Oh, sorry, maybe I was confused. It sounds like you owned another property next to this property or is it all one lot?
There's actually four, um, abstracts to this property. So I, I, I'm not quite sure how it was put together, but when we bought it, it came with four abstracts. So I believe it was four separate properties.
Okay. Holly's gonna show us.
I don't know if I can get back to her.
She zoomed in too far.
Yeah. Well, now I'm just going down the street where I don't even know where it is. Okay. I don't really know how to get back.
So while she's working on that, uh, we have a microphone with miss, with, uh, the petitioner right now. Do the commissioners have any questions that they'd like to ask of him?
Will there, will there be a limit to how many cars will be towed there and stored there? Or is there a limit to how long they can be there before they need to be moved?
Well, by law, we have to keep them for forty-five days before we can dispose of them if they go unclaimed. Most of them get picked up though. There's, there's a few there. If people don't have insurance or whatever, they end up sitting until forty-five days. And then we try to get rid of them a day or two after that.
Roughly how many vehicles fit on, in your storage area?
In the fenced in portion, we could, poof, uh. I don't know, twenty?
Okay. Any other questions from the pet, uh, from the commissioners for the petitioner?
Oh, way too far. Dentist. I think I'm just missing it here. Yeah. See, this is the, that little rental place.
Look for Papa Murphy's.
Yeah.
It's right here.
Yeah, that's it right there.
Put your hand one block to the right. And then one block south. Isn't it right here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, thank you, thank you. Yes, this is it. So, um. So, yeah, this is two parcels. Um, this south parcel.
Yeah, we own that one.
Yeah, that's, but it's zone residential right now, so they probably need to do some privacy screening.
Can you guys hear Holly right now?
Oh, sorry.
All right. Um, so the, this is two parcels, two separate parcels. Um, the, the one to the south is zone residential. So according to the existing CUP, I mean, I guess unless something was changed. They should have some kind of, uh. Privacy fencing on this north part. I mean, I know all of it is enclosed with, um. What do you need, Marty? Oh, he wants to talk to you. Um, the, uh. There should probably be some privacy fencing in this area to, to fence off this, what's considered a residential district. Um, or to provide a screen here or maybe some vegetation. I think they have an entrance. Um, just on this end and then it goes, I think it's just, all of this is fenced in and there's no. I'm not sure if there's a separation here. I'll have to check with Mr. Schroder about that, but that would be an area where there could be some. Screening potentially, or maybe vegetative line of, you know, shrubs or something between the two or, or maybe rezone it. You know, but again, I mean, then that parcel's kind of right in amongst all these residential properties.
So I had a question. So I was just looking at this and, um. So this parcel to the south is residential. Um, is there any screening or do you have any privacy between those two parcels?
We've got a six foot chain link.
Can you speak into?
I'm sorry.
No problem, thank you.
We do have a six foot, uh, chain link fence there, but we can put a, you know, visual barrier up with that. If that's an issue.
Thanks.
Holly, when I'm looking at some of the pictures provided, it looks like there's some cars in a fenced in area on. Grass that's not necessarily asphalt or paved, so I believe one of the recommendations you have from staff. Is that anything in that enclosed area would be paved? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think is that, is some of that paved, but you?
Yeah, some of it is concrete. There's.
There is concrete inside there on the west side of the lot. That, those pictures there are, they look like the, before we bought the property. So you don't see the fence or anything. Um, that wooden fence that was there wasn't even mounted. It, you know, it wasn't even secured there. It would blow over in the wind and everything, so we eliminated all that. But, yeah, we do have, we do have, um. On the west side of the fenced in area, that is, uh, concrete. But we are actually looking into having the whole thing, the whole thing inside their asphalt.
Okay.
So if that were a requirement, that wouldn't be a problem for you?
Well.
I mean, it wouldn't have to be done immediately necessarily, but it would need to be done at some point in the next, you know.
We've been thinking about doing that since we bought the place, just because it makes it so much easier for plowing and everything else.
Could you guys hear that? He just noted that they've been, uh, considering doing. The hard surfacing because it just makes it easier for plowing and maintaining the property.
I heard it.
Are you in the, like, we're applying for, um, like they have in the wintertime where like one company will do once a month? Or something like that where possibly you'd be very busy in the wintertime during a certain time bringing in. Vehicles in that area or is that?
Yeah, we, we do do that. We've actually been in there for almost two years already, so we've been, uh, towing out of there for. It'll be, in February, it'll be two years and we do.
Oh, okay.
We do do that with law enforcement. Um, we don't get too many nights like that. I think this last winter, we only did it one night. Where we were hauling, uh, vehicles off the street for snow removal and stuff like that.
Okay. And you've been doing it for the last two years?
Yes, yes, and we've talked to, we get along with all the neighbors. We haven't had any complaints, not to us anyway. And I'm not aware of any. In fact, uh, we've had compliments since we've been there, so I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, um, there were notices sent out to the neighbors and we did not get any. Calls from, uh, anyone concerned about the conditional use request.
Other thoughts, questions from the commissioners? I should note that this is a public hearing. Uh, anyone, uh, in person or on Zoom interested in speaking to this matter?
All right, I gotta go get a drink of water quick, but I'll let you tell them how many, what your maximum cars or, or what you expect to have in the car lot. Or not car lot, well, how many, how many for sale and then how many would you store as part of your towing maximum?
Yeah, that, we don't, right now we got, I think, five cars out there that are for sale. Um, we probably don't plan on having more than eight to ten. And as far as the impound yard, this is kind of the slow time of year, so we generally have. I don't know, eight to ten in there at any given time. And of course, come wintertime, it could be. It could be pretty full, like it, we had one day last winter when we were doing the snow removal where the, the fenced in yard was full.
Any other thoughts or questions? All right, I'll note that the staff report, um. This does have some recommendations if this is approved for site development, including hard surface material, which we referred to. Um, either asphalt or concrete. Um, six foot fence or vegetative screen, which I think Holly talked a little bit about. Um, hours of business, uh, it sounds like the actual use could be twenty-four seven, but the part that serves customers. Um, not, not that long, I believe. Um, no mechanical repairs made on site. Uh, we didn't touch on lighting. Uh, is there lights on twenty-four seven in that property? Has anything changed with the lighting since it was previously car sales?
Um, we have some outdoor lighting on the building, which is pretty much, uh, motion activated. And we have security cameras and everything out there as well, but that's about it. Everything's motion activated. So we don't have any lights on that are on twenty-four hours.
The existing CUP is required that the lights not shine into the neighboring lots, you know, that they'd be like downward, okay. Um, the petitioner just indicated that there were no lights that would shine onto the neighboring lots.
Holly, you didn't hear from any of the neighbors, right, when you sent something out?
No, and I was kind of surprised because, you know, I mean, but I, again, I mean, First Avenue is pretty commercial. Um. So the neighbors in that area might just be used to having a little bit, you know, more noise and activity around their parcels and. I mean, it's good to know, um, that we, you know, that, uh. You know, from what Mr. Schroder's saying that he's seen as a good neighbor. I mean, the fact that we didn't get any complaints, you know, is, uh, you know, a good sign that that may be true. And we haven't had any, I guess, other than this issue and maybe, you know, maybe there were a couple of other things that we've worked with them on. I mean, they all, you know, were compliant as soon as they knew there was an issue.
Okay. All right, well, we'll take any other questions or else we'll entertain a motion from one of the commissioners.
This is Commissioner Swenson and I'll make a motion to approve, um, to amend the conditional use permit. To add towing to the conditional use permit and to, um, require a hard surface material. And to also have a vegetative screen or fence on the south side of the property.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Swenson. Do I hear a second?
Is I actually including all of the recommendations or just those two?
Commissioner Swenson, would you like to amend to include all of the recommendations listed by staff?
Yes.
Okay, motion amended. Okay, motion amended to include all recommendations, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, then we will do a roll call vote on approving the CUP with the recommendations by staff. Commissioner Srock?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Swenson?
Aye.
Commissioner Postma votes aye, motion passes five to one. Okay, is that all that we have this week, Holly?
Yes, I would like you all to think about, so I know, I just wanna make a little bit of an announcement, so Adama Yount, one of our commissioners, has resigned. I do expect Jim Minow to not be with us in January, and then I also expect Mr. Postma, Commissioner Postma not to be with us as of January. I do have one individual interested to do, you know, potentially come on the commission in January, but if you know anyone who's interested, just have them fill out an application online under boards and commissions. And I can certainly talk to anybody as well to let them know what it would entail to be a planning commissioner. And then in addition to that, those of you who are still on the commission, we'd certainly be wanting to know if any of you would be willing to be the chair and vice chair. So I can get any feedback on that, that would be terrific. I know somebody's already contacted me about that, but, so we would be appointing a new chair and vice chair in January as well.
It's super fun, you get a little hammer. That helps a lot. Is the, is one of those positions open right now, or are they all until January?
Yeah, Commissioner Yount's is open right now.
Okay, so we actually could use somebody right now, so.
Yeah, we definitely could.
Talk with all the folks that you know, especially folks who maybe would have never considered doing some government service, that would be awesome.
Well, yeah, one more thing, so we are updating our zoning code. If any of you are interested in seeing any of the drafts that we have of the zoning code, you know, it's hard to know what's different and what's, you know, what's the same, but, but just, I guess just going through it and having a little bit of familiarity with it, wouldn't hurt, and I, I need to send that to Mr. Byram too for his reading enjoyment, so. But just let me know if you're interested in looking at any of those documents, I know a couple of people have expressed interest. But that is a project that we hope to have completed by the end of the year. And so now, now we're just getting some, some documents to review.
Okay, awesome. I, I think we all are looking forward to a little bit of a refresh, so that maybe we don't talk about ice storage anymore. Any other thoughts or questions from the commissioners? If not, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
This is Commissioner Swenson, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, okay, and we're gonna do a roll call vote. Commissioner Postma votes aye, Commissioner Swenson?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Burrows?
Aye.
Commissioner Srock?
Aye.
Thank you everyone, we are adjourned.
I was gonna call you like five times, honestly, to talk about, you know, something to film for.